Okay, thank you and welcome everyone to the August 4th, 2014 Bryan City Council Meeting. So, first thing that we have on the agenda is approval of minutes of the July 21st council meeting and the July 28th special meeting. So, gentlemen, you've been presented with those minutes and do we have any additional corrections need to be made to those?
I'll make a motion to be approved.
Oh, sir. Excuse me, I'll second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now, next is hearing of public concern. And so that is anyone may approach council that is not on the agenda.
I did have Chuck.
Okay.
In the microphone.
Forward please.
Mr. Chuck Shepard called this evening and has to be addressing the council, so it's yours, Mr. Shepard.
Mine, it's mine, all right, cool. Hi, boys, how we doing? Girls, Rhonda. The concern I have, I think the statute needs to be changed concerning the lawn cutting. Recently, I'm gonna say about four, four to six weeks ago, I received a notice, or a notice was put in my yard at one of my tenant's house in the backyard, actually, I think it might have been in the front yard, I'm not really sure. But anyway, the notice was put in the yard, unannounced, unannounced to me, or, I don't know what's the word I'm looking for. I did not know anything about the notice. I was on vacation for two weeks, the notice said cut the lawn within 72 hours, you're gonna get fined. No notice was sent to my office, no call, no certified letter, et cetera. Now, after the three-day notice, in fact, I have a letter in my pocket right now stating that the tenant did mow the lawn. She tried to mow it. It was a little on the high side, she weed whacked it, cut it down to somewhat of a level, and I'm not sure if the city mowed it or not. Meantime, I got a, I got subpoenaed to the court, and certified letter, yada, yada, yada. And the certified letter, all that stated was, go to the court because you did not mow the lawn within 72 hours. Fine. I was unaware of it. What, I'm just gonna give you a couple scenarios. First of all, I own 40 properties. I don't have time to run around all of my properties to look to see if there's a stupid three-day notice in the, in the yard. Okay? I know the statute says that's all you have to do, put a three-day notice in the yard, if I don't mow it within 72 hours, you're gonna find me. Okay? Fine. I'm the one paying the real estate taxes. I'm the one paying all the bills as far as insurance, et cetera, but taxes is the main thing. I'm the one, court of record, what, I believe that the statute should be changed to send a certified letter to the person that owns the property, not the tenant, because that tenant didn't like me, he could have stopped, he could have taken that sign out of the yard, he could have stomped on it, he could have thrown it in the trash. I would not have been known. I would never have known about this. And here it is, I did not know about it. So I get a certified letter, I appear in court, I plead my case, he finds me guilty because I pled no contest. I guess I should have pled no guilt, not guilty, because I was unaware, I thought I could represent myself and whatever. Anyway, bottom line is, I got a fine of $150, they suspended $100, hit me up with court costs, I go, $129 for something I think is really ridiculous, because you guys, or whatever the statute says, if we put a three-day notice in the yard, that's all we have to do. I'm the one paying the real estate taxes, and I feel that you should send a certified letter to the person of record to say, hey, by the way, your yard needs mowed, here is your certified letter stating that we gave you proper notice. We're back to proper notice. I feel you did not give me proper notice. I have since talked to Brown County Commissioners, or a tenant down, or landlord down there, they own several properties, and I ask him what their stature, what their quote-quote procedure is, and that's a county seat. Where, where county seat here? Bryan is county seat, correct, Williams? They have nine days, number one, to mow the lawn, and number two, they send him a certified letter. And number three, he actually gets a call. He gets a call. He gets a certified letter, and he gets a call. And nine days, not this three-day crap. I'm on vacation for seven days. I had no idea. No idea I got this notice. And I think it's ridiculous that, and I talked to the Park Truck Association guy, he says, I think that's all we have to do. And I said, I don't think so. I'm the one paying the taxes. Send me a certified letter. And get me fair warning, fair notice. So I got a $129 bill to mow a patch of grass that's less than that little corner back there behind Rick Hoopy. It was a very small section, and we attempted to mow it. And evidently, it wasn't to the liking of the Parks and Recreation, so they turned around and mowed a little bit more of it. I went back about a week later, once I found out about the notice, because I got the certified letter, and I mowed it down to a level that I was respect, I was, to my liking. Again, I think the statute needs to be changed, you need to, I think you give us, give us more than three-day notice. I have 40 properties, I don't have time to run around all of my properties to see if there's a stupid three-day notice in there. It's a stupid $129 fine, I can handle it, but I think it's ridiculous, and I'd like to get it waived, but I don't think it's probably gonna happen, but whatever. That's all I got to say. Any questions?
Well, sir, I'm sorry that you have 40 properties, but the law does require a landlord be responsible and know the condition of their grass, and the grass didn't get to seven inches in three days. So that's the first problem. Second issue, it's not the Parks and Rec, it's the zoning administrator who submits the notice, which by statute is allowed to be done by conspicuous notice in the front yard, which is what he did.
Tenant's responsible for mowing the lawn. I told the tenant he's responsible for mowing the lawn. The lawn that didn't get mowed was behind a building that you could not see from the road.
Well, I know.
Barely. You might see a section of it, but it was, it was hidden behind the road. I know what you're saying.
Okay.
I understand that I'm supposed to be responsible and check my properties accordingly.
Okay. Well, then if you do that, then you would know that A, it's not being mowed, and B, that there's a notice. We can't call everybody that we have a problem with for two reasons. One, it's not feasible, because some properties, unlike yours, are in foreclosure, and we can't even find the people. So sometimes it's a bank or a mortgage company that gets the notice. And if you're out of town, a certified letter isn't gonna help either, because you're not gonna get the certified letter.
Oh, yes, I am, because I have people receiving my mail all the time.
Well, then you need to make sure somebody's taking care of your property.
You didn't send the certified letter.
But we did, we did a placard notice, which we are allowed to.
You put a three-day notice in the yard. Brown, Brown County, look it up, Brown County, nine days. They give them nine days, and they send a certified letter.
Sir, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the statutes all over Ohio, and there are several. Bryan, Stryker, Montpelier, West Juneteenth, Edgerton, all use placard notice.
No certified letter, no call.
When it comes to court, a phone call is not gonna be proof.
I agree.
That you've been noticed.
I agree. That's why I think a certified letter should be sufficient.
Well...
I'm paying the real estate taxes.
That also costs money, and it's expensive enough as it is, because many people don't mow their yard, so then we have to go out and mow it. So those are all costs that we have to recoup. That's why we do the placard notice, because the zoning administrator can take it out and put it in the yard and not cause extra expense. So there's many jurisdictions that utilize that method as well.
Again, my comment was, if the tenant doesn't like me, or tenant doesn't bring me that to my attention, how am I gonna know it? He pays his rent on a clockers.
That's not a problem, Chuck.
That's between you and your tenant.
I understand that, I understand that.
That's between you and your tenant, okay?
But I, I have to inspect my properties. Grass could grow really fast.
Okay.
It could grow nine inches in one month. You're expecting me to go to my properties every month and inspect them?
You should.
That's...
Probably should. You're probably right.
Yeah.
You're probably right, but you go on vacation, you get busy.
Well, then you get somebody to make sure that the grass is mowed.
Why don't you guys just give, how many of these do you really issue?
We do several in a year.
We get a lot of complaints about yards.
You're not the only one.
And that's why this...
And that's why we have a standard procedure for everyone.
Send us a letter.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? You've made your point.
Okay, next subject. I brought this to Doug Johnson's attention, I'm not sure if he brought it up to your attention, but I think, as a certified public accountant in the city of Bryan, you guys are wasting a lot of money. April, right around, eh, it's, you guys send the letters out right around toward the end of January. To a lot of these retired folks that have no income, all they have is pension, IRAs, no regular W-2, or no rentals, you send out a letter stating, by the way, do you have any income? If you don't, sign and date, and send back the pre-addressed envelope. Is that correct? Pre-addressed envelope. I bet if you took a survey of those letters that you sent out to the retirees, 99% of them come back with zero. Nothing due. So if you would calculate the money that the city of Bryan wastes on sending these certified, these letters out to the retirees that have no income other than pension and IRAs, for years upon years upon years, you could be 99 years old and you will get this letter that's pre-addressed, that's pre-posted, and the amount of money that the city of Bryan is wasting putting these letters together, when 99% of them come back with zero, is astonishing. Now, if you contact the city of Columbus, guess what? No filing at all. If everything is gonna be zero. If you work in Bryan, you live in Bryan, everything's 1.8%, there is no tax due. There is no filing. Think of the paperwork, think of the processing that you guys would save if you do not have to process, first of all, the retirees, second of all, the people that always break even. If you do a survey of how many people in city of Bryan, what we got, 8,000, 9,000? I'll bet you, you do a survey, I'll bet you six, if not 7,000 of them, 75%, zero due, Rick, zero due. Because you work in Bryan, or you work outside of Bryan, and you get 1.8% taken out. It's your responsibility. I know it's a quote-quote recording thing, and things that you have to keep track of, and blah, 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 and keep track of everybody, but on the other side of the coin, if you're wasting all this money, all this processing of sending out pre-addressed envelopes, that is a joke, in my opinion, is an absolute joke. You would save yourself thousands of dollars year after year after year after year, plus processing, postage, envelopes, letters, et cetera. I would seriously suggest you look into that.
How much money do we get? Do you have a figure?
Well, our income taxes for the city rent owns $6,505 a year. But the reason we do that and give them prepaid envelopes is so they send them back, and the reason we send them out to everyone is because within the city of Bryan, our ordinance says it's mandatory filing.
Back to the ordinance change. I think the ordinance need to be changed. Same thing with this lawn business.
How many retirees still work?
Not very many. Well, maybe they do, but Doug?
Yeah.
1.8% is already taken out.
Only if they work within the city.
Correct.
Yes.
Not necessarily. Rick doesn't work inside the city limits, he gets 1.8% taken out.
But they have to report it to their...
I agree, but again, 90%, you look at the grand total, look at the total filed returns, okay? That are filed. How many are actually zero due? That's the figure I'd like to know. I guarantee you, it's well over 50%. And you're wasting a lot of money processing zero due returns. And zero retirement people that you're wasting, you're paying a prepaid postage envelope, 48 cents or 46 cents, but people that have been retired for years, Rick, they are not gonna work. They're 79, 80 years old, I'm gonna go play golf.
You mentioned Columbus, how do they follow up on that?
They do not require, and Archibald does not require any filing. Archibald requires no filing whatsoever unless there's something due, i.e., you have a rental, you have self-employment, you have wages earned outside the city limits that no withholdings have been taken out.
So how would we know that unless they filed something? We still, if we, if we don't...
I understand what you're saying, it's quote-quote on an honor system.
Right.
I understand that.
Do you know many...
But guess what? A lot of cities go on the honor system. If there's a, if there, you could put it in the ordinance, if you are in violation of so-and-so, and you do, oh, and you did not file, guess what? $100 fine, so what? Think of the money, Rhonda, you're gonna save by not paying, not processing all this fictitious returns that are nothing's due. It's gonna stagger your brain, how many returns that are filed with the city of Bryan that is nothing due. Nothing. Easily 60, 70%. Calculated, I guarantee you, zero. And again, us accountants know that if something's due or not, most returns, you've got your H. R. Box, your Jackson Newitz, your Boyer, your Al Horne, your Penrod, et cetera, they know when something's due, trust me. And almost 90% of the returns are filed by professionals anyway.
Well, that's interesting, because most of the cases that I end up filing to prosecute, they have filed their state and their federal returns, but because they're prepared and know they had to file a city income tax, they never had it done.
Not in my office.
Well, your office isn't the same as other offices, I'm telling that right here.
I, I understand, especially if they're out of town, but most local accountants are very, very aware that they have to file a city return if they're inside the city limits.
And how the city tax prepares...
At any time during the year, you're inside the city limits, you have to file. And I'm well aware of that.
I'd also believe when the clerk of the city is charged with the responsibility of collecting all the monies due the city, if she fails in doing that, she can be held accountable, right? They can get a finding against you. If she fails, and they come in and find out we were sloppy, we didn't collect, which I don't know how we'd know if we had no filings, but she could be held accountable. It's a, it's a, it's a collection thing. I don't think it's that big a deal for somebody to sign, I had no income, and send it back. And it just keeps the records clean, it protects our city clerk, it protects the city and the taxpayer.
If you actually would calculate the expense, it would stagger your brain.
There's a lot of things we do that the expense may not warrant the return on it, but it's a matter of knowing what's out there and what isn't being paid. We would have no way of knowing, anybody could say, I had no income, and if it doesn't, if they don't go to file a return, who's gonna know? And how many years could that go on? It has, I think it's a proper accounting procedure, and I think it has to be done.
I disagree. I mean, other cities, other cities are doing it. Other cities are doing it, then why wouldn't you? Other cities are going to the system where it's basically quote-quote an honor system, and there's, again, 75% of the returns come back to that office, zero is due. I'm up to 75 now.
I recognize the honor system might be the way to go, but the filings we have in court against people who don't pay tells me it doesn't work very well. Not that the people in Bryan aren't honest, but I do believe there's enough of them that would warrant that if they knew we weren't following it up, would not file. I may be wrong, but that's my opinion.
I think it'll be easier to talk to Archibald, some of these other places that Chuck has mentioned, and see what, what the results are. I mean, okay, that's local.
Okay, very good. It's all good.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Chuck.
Next on the agenda, we have approval and ordinance authorizing the change order for Walnut and Cherry Street. So, Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 33, 2014, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasure to issue change order number one and final for the project known as Walnut and Cherry Streets Sanitary Sewer Improvements.
Mr. Whelan.
Mr. Moore. Finally wrapped up this project, got all the seating and mulching done, we're gonna close it out. As you can see, it's a deduct of $31,469. There was a few taps we didn't need to put in, and a few other oddities, you can go down there and scan and see, but just a typical project where actually we were under budget by about eight or nine percent, so very pleased with that. Again, this project is funded 50% by the Ohio Public Works and 50% by the city of Bryan. We did receive a 50% grant on that, so we'll finalize this paperwork and get the rest of our money coming back. And I think we've already got some of it returned to us in the beginning of the project, but we'll get the rest finalized and get the rest coming back in. So with that, I would request you suspend the rules and approve this deduct.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
I like deduct.
Okay.
Okay, I move we suspend.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopy?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tommy?
Yes. Okay, I need a motion to pass.
So moved.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. A motion to pass?
Second.
No, we need a motion to pass.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to pass then.
Second.
Rick Hoopy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Okay.
Number five is an ordinance, so Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 34, 2014, an ordinance proving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of the city of Bryan, state of Ohio, in conforming Traffic and General Offenses Code provisions to state law changes.
This is the standard ordinance that I submit to you each year when we update the Green Book Bryan Codified Ordinances, and this is just to make our current sections to correspond with the Ohio Revised Code changes.
Yep, and most of you have the Green Books already replaced.
I move we suspend.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Number six is now another ordinance, so Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 35, 2014, an ordinance granting to Board of Commissioners of Defiance County, Ohio Board, its successors and signs, a perpetual easement and right-of-way for public highway and road purposes over, across, and through land of the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, together with right of ingress and egress over adjacent land of the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, to construct and therefore use, inspect, repair, maintain, reconstruct, and remove a public roadway, including drainage and occurrences, therefore to widen Buckskin Road for highway safety purposes.
Again, I received a call from Stephen Graff in the Defiance County Engineers Office, and they were requesting to do some improvements on Buckskin Road. This crosses the Marquee Corridor, which is our electric line, and so I talked with both Bryan Carlin and the mayor about this easement, and particularly since it deals with the Marquee Corridor, wanted the board to also be aware they're going to look at this also tomorrow night. But initial discussion with Bryan is that we didn't have any issues with them having this easement. We are not requiring any compensation from them for the easement. We try to work together with their local governments, and it's just gonna be for purposes of improving Buckskin Road. So we would ask that you would move on this this evening, so that they can move forward with their project.
Okay. Well, I'm satisfied with Rhonda's comments and with Board of Public Affairs pretty much agreeing, or Bryan Carlin. So, any other comments? I entertain a motion to suspend.
So moved.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Motion to pass?
So moved.
Second.
Rick Hoopy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Number seven is also an ordinance, so Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 36, 2014, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasure to issue change order number two for the project known as WIL-US127-2.01 PID 83338, LPA agreement number 25656.
Okay, Mr. Whelan.
In English, that means the South Main Widening Project.
Gotcha.
We had had a change order last month, and as I told you, ODOT likes to do these monthlies, they like to process all the adds, they don't like to process any deducts until the last change order. That way, they always have the, they always have the contract higher, and then always take some away at the end. That works for bonding and other items like that. So I'm still anticipating a deduct for the final change order, but these are just items that we ran over on some striping, we ran over, we had additional pavement repair. As we talked last month, the engineer that designed this, we had subcontracted Pogomeyer's, since this was an ODOT job, you had to be an ODOT pre-qualified consultant to design this. They had inadvertently omitted curb removal and sidewalk removal, so that's two bigger ticket items on there that we had to pay for. And that's not a negotiated fee. They look at what the state average bid pricing, and we, they're allowed to charge 85% of what the state average bid is. So it kinda helps municipalities out when there is an item that's omitted, so they don't necessarily take advantage of the municipality with the change order and try and overcharge them. So with this, I would respectfully request you suspend the rules and approve this add. We're hoping we have a deduct on the last one. We're nearing the end. As you can see, the curb went in last week, and they're gonna be paving this week and next week, so we should be wrapped up by the August 15th deadline, and we'll come back in September with the final.
Is this an 80, 20s?
No. Well, this project, we were given $376,000 total. We will not get any additional back from ODOT on this particular project. All these change orders are 100% out of...
Our pocket.
Our pocket, which will be handled in items nine and 10 below with the transfer in interfund cash advance.
But we did get 376.
We will get $376,000 back. We get up to that dollar figure, and we're over the share portion on it, so we will definitely get all that back.
Well, so when I was looking this over this weekend, and so what I'm looking at here is that, there's like, number six, it says plan error...
Correct.
And someplace else.
Every single item there is plan error, plan omission. It's items that weren't necessarily shown on the plans, but between the inspector and myself, we felt they should have been, it's just items that needed to be done.
Okay, going back. So my question is, is that Pogomeyer did not put those in the plans.
Right.
That's the way I understand it, right?
Correct. Pogomeyer's not having the plans.
And by them not doing that, it's now costing us more money.
The only idea on that is, had it been included in the plans, we would have paid for it anyways. We would have just known initially the project would have been $40,000 higher.
But if it would have been in the plan initially, would that have changed that $376,000?
No. That was determined eight years ago or seven years ago when we actually applied and got the grant itself.
Okay.
I'm still going to have some communications with the design firm upon the completion of the project. Ron and I have already had some conversations. I'll share those with you at a later time.
Okay.
But we are going to have some communications with the firm.
Because there has been some other bad taste in our mouth in regards to this firm.
I'll be happy when this project is over in its entirety.
Thank you.
With that, I request you suspend and approve, please.
Get away, get out of it quickly.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen.
Fracking, I'll whip up.
I'll make a motion we suspend.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Need a motion to pass?
So moved.
Let Rick have it. I'll go second.
Dick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. You're standing by, right?
I'm standing by.
All right. We have another ordinance. So, Laurie, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 37, 2014, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasure tissue change order number three and final for the project known as WIL-SR2/SR34-5.97/15.75, resurfacing PID 93954.
High Street in English. If you're all aware, project's done, complete, looks great, tickled, get all kinds of compliments on it. This project wasn't 80/20. There is additional funding available. I'm confident that this $30,000 add, 80% of that money, will get returned back to the City of Bryan because we were under the original estimate, the original grant amount actually, with what the final bid project came in at. So, I'm confident of this $30,000, we will get 80% of that back direct to us from ODOT, unlike the previous project.
That 15.75, that's right here, right?
Yeah. They define the project, if you look at that number, WIL-SR2/SR34, that's a state route.
Right.
And it basically runs from mile marker 5.9, which is out on the west side of town, to 15.75. It's not a mile marker, it's nearest county road. It's just their determination for their project ID number.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Okay. Gentlemen, motion to suspend?
Move the we suspend.
I'll second it.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Need a motion to pass?
So moved. Second?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
On a side note, this project was designed by DGL out of Toledo. Had no problems with them, terrific firm to work with, great project all in all. ODOT's pleased, we're all happy on it.
A note to that is that last week, you know, Bryan hosted the state baseball tournament here, Ten Use. Okay. And there was, what, 11 towns, I think, or teams in here from, you know, wherever, Galleon and Talmage and Dover and things like that. But probably there was at least three people come up to me and, again, just complimented Bryan on what a nice, you know, community it looked like, and boy, you know, your streets just looked great, you know. And they were talking about High Street, and I was, you know, that's only about three weeks old or whatever the case may be. So, does add some value.
Sure does.
Definitely some nice comments.
Increases curb appeal. Definitely glad to have it.
Yep, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we have an ordinance for transfer funds. Laurie, please number and read.
Ordinance number 38, 2014, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the City of Bryan for the month ending August 31, 2014. This is a transfer from the half percent income tax to the 506 South Main Street ODOT Fund project for $40,562.23. It's also a transfer request of $6,020.80 from the half percent income tax fund for the High Street ODOT Project Fund. Total amount of transfer requested is $46,583.3. And these are both applicable to the previous two ordinances you just approved.
Got you. Okay. Okay. Gentlemen?
I move we suspend.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Need a motion to pass?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay. Now, we have a resolution for interfund cash advance. Laurie, please
number and read.
Resolution number 27, 2014, a resolution providing for an interfund cash advance. This is a resolution requesting $24,083.18 be advanced from the 401 Capital Improvement Fund to the 408 High Street Paving Project Fund. These dollars should be reimbursed, as Bryan said, from ODOT for the High Street project.
Make a motion to suspend.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Second.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we have an ordinance for annual appropriations. Laurie, please number and read.
Ordinance number 39, 2014, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request of $2,769.79 for the General Fund Parks and Recreation Department. $1,950 of that is for donation received from the Bard's 100th Anniversary, and $819.79 is an insurance reimbursement for vehicle. It's also an appropriation request for the $40,562.23 for the South Main Street ODOT Project, an appropriation request of the $30,103.98 for the High Street Paving Project. Total amount of appropriation requested is $73,436.
Motion to suspend?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinants. So, Laurie, would you please number and read and the contract for refuse bags?
Ordinance number 40, 2014, an ordinance directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Dynapack Corporation for 600,000 refuse bags according to the specifications of the Bryan Street Commissioner to total cost of $51,600.
Mr. Instrom?
Good evening. Once again, this year, it was Dynapack with the lowest bid, which this will be either the fourth or fifth year in a row. But they've had the lowest bid, and we haven't had any issues with them.
I'll make a motion we suspend the, for the rules.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay. I need a motion to pass.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay. The mayor, I think, are you going to handle this motion to reappoint Andy Watersen to the Metropolitan Housing?
Yes. We received a letter from Bryan Horst, from the Metropolitan Housing Authority, stating that Andy's term was up on the board. Actually, that's a five-year term. It's a long term, but the group meets right here in our office, and Andy holds staff. They meet about four times a year in my conference room. And the letter stated that they have been happy with Andy serving on that before, and he's done a good job. So, my recommendation is to reappoint Andy and keep that office going right here in our room back here.
I'll make a motion we reappoint him.
I'll second that.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
All right. Next is a resolution to ratify the agreement between the city and local union 245. So, Laurie, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 28, 2014, a resolution ratifying the agreement between the City of Bryan and the local union number 245 of International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers.
As council's aware, and as the media have been aware, that we've been having executive sessions since about August, number October, just about every month, dealing with different sections of an article to approve a contract for the wastewater workers at the wastewater plant. This has taken place, and we finally got a contract resolution that was approved by their members for a vote about a week ago. And upon approval of the council, you receive copies of their agreement. They will put the table contents and everything to that. And in that, they've set working conditions and conditions at the plant and trying to set different salary schedules based on whether they have a license one or license two. As you know, what's happened in Toledo here just recently, it's very important that we have licensed people in these positions. And that's one of the things we insisted of this in this contract. If they don't, individuals don't have a license, that we encourage them and are paying them to go get their license and be able to service well what they're doing now. But we want licensed people in that area. So, it's been a long time. It's lawyers get involved in this situation, and you have vacations, and you have time off, and you have snow things. And it's longer than we would have liked to go, but it's finally, we've got the paperwork that we've tried to keep you informed all the way through with this. So, with their approval and your approval, then we can get the wage set and so forth for the people that are qualified, certified, and those that need to be certified in the future for the plant. And it's a three-year contract, so we have some time to work some issues out.
What will be the effective date?
January 1.
January 1.
Goes back to January 1, 2014. Yes, for three years. So, we're already almost one year in, passed into it already.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to suspend.
So moved.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay. That's all we have on the agenda, and take a short recess, and then
we will go into executive session for acquisition of property, collective bargaining, compensation, employment of personnel. So, Mr. Whelan?
Nothing.
Mr. Instrom? Assistant Chief Poole?
Okay.
Mr. Al, you have anything for us? Mr. Horn? Okay. All right. Mr. Hoopie?
I have a couple of things. First thing, I want to thank Chuck Shepard for coming forward. But, you know, we are servants of the people who have elected us in these positions, and I appreciate him bringing his concerns to us to at least bring them to our attention so that we can discuss them and come up with some kind of a decision as far as those things are concerned. Second thing that I wanted to mention was recently, we, the city has put up no parking signs over on Blakesley Avenue along the park. It was reported to me that they're not being very effective, that as, like these microphones, the signs are across the, along the road, and cars were actually parked between the signs there. So, it may be something that we're going to have to look at getting a little more serious about that situation. So, just wanted to bring that. Hopefully, the people will heed those signs, but if not, we may have to get a little more.
Yeah. The report that I was getting back, that most of the out-of-town folks, especially, it was a lot better. The people that had the complaints before was a lot better. And, you know, you'd like the loudspeaker announcements and so forth, you've got those cars in there. Of course, the other alternative, you go ticket those folks and you get a problem like that. So, you know, where do you stay? Try to keep things even keel. But I understand they did do a better job than they, than had been before without the signs. But you're right, they're playing some games with those signs.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Reed?
Nothing today.
Okay. Mr. Day?
I hear a lot of people talking to us about blight within our city. And it behooves me, and, you know, and that goes along with what Mr. Shepard was discussing about the lawns being too long and so on like that. But I think that our community, we need to take a close look at it. And if it comes down to a point, I know we're nothing like Toledo has going on right now, but we need to maybe get a citizens committee together or something and, you know, keep our fair city looking great. And we look great in a lot of spots, but every once in a while, we have a black eye appears on us, and some of that strung out too long. And I just wish that we could take care of that a little better. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Laurie?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Fonda?
No, sir.
All right. I have nothing. Mayor?
No, I agree with Keith. We work on these. We only have so much money that can come from the state to tear down houses and so forth. We're using that to the best of our ability. And also, we try to, you know, I can go along with the reports and everything we hear. But we have a lot of people that call us. We do have tall grass and everything of that nature. And there's got to be a balance between this and whatever, and whether it means we've got to take a look at our procedures. We can do that. We can also form a committee. But you've got to have the dollars and the people willing to put the money into the blighted areas to fix that up in order to make it look better. And right now, on South Main, we have two or three areas that are doing that. They've done some at the north end of town, I know. But there's always a house or two that comes up that Bryan or the place we hear about it, and we try to deal with. It's an ongoing, ongoing process. Economy's getting a little bit better now. People are able to afford to do some things. And I've noticed with the new street going in, it seems like that has spurred some of the property owners to spruce up their properties, too. We notice that. So, you know, if there's any ideas or any suggestions or any dollars available. And I might say that Spanglers is a good example of when they buy up properties around their area, they clean it up, they tear the houses down, and put the sidewalks back in. Looks pretty nice around those areas, and that's what you got to have. So...
It looks great down there on Mulberry where they cleared out.
Right. I also heard from the, we're still, with the good railroad track we have now on the High Street, now they're talking about the other railroad tracks. So, they're going to work on another track soon, one that's easier to work with. But there's two or three other grade crossings. But we have our contacts now that we can call and say, hey, would you work on this, this section of track? So, we'll see what happens. Railroad doesn't move very fast, but we'll keep working on that, too. So...
That it?
That's about all I have.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. And we'll take a short break and then go into executive session. Thanks again.